...United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you'd most sign the warrants?
So moved.
Sorry.
All in favor? And Dan?
Well, that's going around like you're proof of minutes of May 12th Select Board meeting as written. I will send that.
All in favor? All in business. We want to sign a letter of appreciation and honor of Sonya Bailey, our fellow selectman who has really lost suddenly.
Yes.
It's really sad. She represented all the people in Quebec, they were all their lives and we really appreciated her input. So, I want to finish on this.
Is there any special thing?
Did you get the reimbursement for Club Scope Shores on this?
Yes, we did.
It's, is it a separate one?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't see it. So, there was only three, oh, there are only three? It didn't look like there was a separate, but maybe. The town of Luebec expresses its gratitude for Sonya's lifetime of service and dedication to the town of Luebec. Years of self-sacrifice, countless hours spent in meetings representing Luebec and at times making difficult decisions. We are thankful that she went above and beyond with her years of participation among the MSAB 19 school board directors, as well as her more recent role as select board member for the town of Luebec. She showed exemplary leadership and true community spirit. Sonya has served her community well. We will truly miss her and on behalf of the town of Luebec, please accept the heartfelt appreciation and sincere condolences. Oh, we need a motion to sign this.
I'll make a motion to sign it.
I don't think they're all in favor? Sign it on the main, you might need. Oh, yes, that's right. We requested one for each of her children.
Has one just been removed?
Just stacking the water here. What's going on?
This isn't a fine.
Oh, yes, okay, right.
So, we're moving on to?
Yes, so, request for a referendum was taken out of the agenda. Cemetery mowing.
Sort of some new update for me?
Just an update for me, just so that you know. The, we have been advertising for the positions of the mowers. We've lost a regular to a different full-time job. Congratulations to him. He has been helping us on his day off. So, we're trying desperately to get the cemeteries ready for Memorial Day weekend, especially to honor those that have come before us. And I'm happy to announce that we've partnered with the Arise Program. They are helping the town of Chias out in the same situation and they're coming, they'll be here tomorrow and Friday with seven people to help mow.
Oh, great.
We've also.
Do we have seven mowers?
They're bringing two and we have five.
Oh, great.
So, that's, we are trying our best.
We're at a point of hiring goats.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
There's nobody out there.
I know there's a formality with hiring, the select board has the power to hire, but we do have somebody that, a student that is mowing, that today was his birthday, so if he would like to make a more formal acceptance of his position as a temporary seasonal mower for us, it's Dustin.
Whoever mows that fly, email Flylighter Corner today.
Justin who?
No, they're just mowing the cemeteries. We have Kenny and I think, I don't know.
There was somebody new there that was mowing and mowing.
Well, could've been, because Kenny was gonna stop trying. Yep. So, it's Dustin Sullivan. So, he is our, our new mower.
Well, thank you very much.
He's still in school, so we can only give one day a week, but we're in school.
Do you need something from us?
Yep.
What's your?
A motion to.
To hire Justin Sullivan.
So, we hire Justin Sullivan on a temporary.
We're all in favor.
Dustin is a nice, nice guy.
Good, thank you.
Yes, he is.
Thank you, Ellen. Hopefully you find some more people for the rest, summer rest looking for a job? I would love to be down there with some kids. I love kids, but I'm tempted.
I'm shocked because I can't believe that. Anyway, have fun.
Okay, so, what's, we're up to do now?
All right.
Public Works rock rake, Public Works rock rake.
I wrote a little write-up for you in your packet. Our Ricky Bradley, the supervisor for Public Works, has requested purchase a 10-foot rake with a pinball hitch. Luebec has eight dirt roads which we maintain and each time Public Works Department needs a rake, they rent it from a local contractor. That's $250 each time. And so far this year, well, this is our bid now, we've got another bill. It's actually, I believe it's at 1,200 something right now. It's over budget because of renting.
Why are we giving a rock rake on the road?
I don't know.
I think it should go on the budget for the next year in annual account meeting. I think we've already purchased enough.
And the contractor who had been renting that to the town has used it once himself all year. He just bought new teeth at the cost of $950 for it, so he's really good at making money.
Hopefully he doesn't be free.
No.
It's our rent.
Well, I think we're discussing in the Budget Committee that we're gonna have a fund.
Well, let me continue reading my letter here. The Public Works capital equipment account has a balance of $12,075 in it with a recent sale of the snow blower that was $2,075 which had been donated. So, with the purchase of the rake would be $8,499. It'd be remaining balance in the economic, of the capital equipment fund of $6,424. And so, it would be coming out of the current near equipment fund, which is what it's for.
But that rolls over.
It does.
And.
And he anticipates you, sorry.
If we keep taking it, we're never gonna build it. And pretty soon, I mean, we need a, we're gonna need a backup, rubber tire backup.
What's the balance of the capital equipment fund?
Prior to, if we were to purchase this?
Oh, $12,000?
$12,075. And that's with the additional $2,075 from the sale of the snow blower. And there would be a balance of $6,424 if you purchased the.
I agree with that.
Rock rake.
And he anticipates using this rock?
Well, there's eight roads, eight dirt roads that, and that's what they, they use. They use the grater and they use the rock rake. The rock rake buys them time.
Well, I think that we should try to get the balance up to at least $20,000 and then they would be able, why do they need us? Why do they need our permission?
Because it's over $5,000.
Oh, they're finding out why they needed our permission in the first place.
It's over $5,000, so I'd like to have the select board approval.
Yeah.
How much is it?
I don't know. He came to me asking to purchase this.
For how much?
Uh, $8,499.
I mean, I think if you can get it for $49.99, that's.
Is it brand new, they're buying it brand new? Is it new?
Yes. And it's from Beauregard Equipment here.
How much did you say? Well, what have we so far expended on Beauregard equip, oh, what have we spent on the rental fees? You're telling me each time, but what is, yeah, what's the total of just, just that equipment? Not anybody's anything else, just the rock rake? $900,000?
$950, I believe.
So far, they have spent.
$950, that's it?
I do believe, yeah.
I think it should be.
Equipment rental, they have spent $1,350.
Is that, but is equipment rental just the rock rake?
That's all he has rented yet.
Well, I think it's a really good wish list for the coming fiscal year and not something that we should go entertain in three weeks before the end of the year.
Right, I agree with you.
It should go in the wish list.
That's fine. He made a request and it might have to bring it to you.
So, I'll make a motion, we put it into the budget. I actually, I make a motion that we, we make sure that we put in a minimum of $10,000 on, in their capital equipment fund, which I think the Budget Committee is working on right now.
That's already done with the Budget Committee.
Yeah, we already did that, right? Is that the amount we did?
Yeah.
So, that's our, it's already being, you know, entertained. The sale of the snow blower, did that go into their capital equipment fund?
Yes, it did.
And we also are talking about, if he has any money left over, we're gonna put it into that equipment fund also, correct?
We're gonna do an article for that, I think.
Yep.
In a note or email, right?
And I agree, just, we're better off to wait until we're done with all the budget, so.
Yeah, I think so.
So, anybody wanna make a motion on it?
I did.
You made a motion that had $10,000, but it was a bit seconded.
Oh.
Well, we've already.
Well, that was already done, apparently.
That was already done in the Budget Committee. So, we're just gonna make a motion not to put this on, put this request for the next, entertain this request for the next fiscal year.
What you're trying to say is we're gonna table it.
That's it. Well, no, no, we're just, we're gonna put it.
How about currently denied?
It's gonna be put on the next fiscal year, which is four weeks from now. It'll be passed the new budget.
So, we're tableing it?
Not, it's not the same thing, it's not the same thing.
We're putting it in limbo.
We are not table.
Limbo, there you go.
We're gonna, what, that's interesting, we're tableing it.
Harold.
Right, we are tableing it.
Harold motion to entertain this request for the next fiscal year.
So, we're gonna table it?
This board is getting into semantics now.
Grandma, grandma.
I hear when she takes a pirate's fund, $500 and go down and have a drink. It's for adults anyway. All right, what are we gonna add?
I think we can, we have a second. And all in favor of this, of tableing this till the next fiscal year?
Yes.
What, okay, Renee, what's connect.me, letter of support?
Oh, this is to do with broadband. We were, sent an email asking for support. I'll just read what I drafted. This is to connect.me. The Select Board of the Town of Luebec endorses a proposed change of the definition of broadband internet to 100 over 100 megabytes per second from the current federal level of 25 over 3 megabytes per second. The town of Luebec is 78.38 square miles. There are many areas of town that are sparsely populated, yet still require high-speed internet for students, remote medicine, and career needs. If Luebec is ever going to grow economically, fast reliable internet service is as much of a necessity as electricity. Unavailable and unserved areas can no longer be considered an option.
I make a motion, you sign this letter.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor of this?
Be all set.
Oh, three seconds, take your time. Do you have the original letter?
If I could add something here, I just interject, because Renee and I have been talking about this a lot. That the whole thing with broadband and high-speed internet has taken on a life of its own now. We're in fairly good shape with Don Fuehellen and Tim McCaffrey, but the Fed's, the federal government has kind of interjected and they are, at this point, parsing out areas here to certain companies. And Luebec is, for the most part, going to be taken over by Consolidated Communications. And there are parts of Luebec that are left out, which is one of our concerns. So, I had sent a letter to Peggy Schaper, who works in the state. And her suggestion is to work with Don and Tim for these unserved areas. But what I'm thinking is that things are going to start happening fairly quickly. And it's all good, it's just that we have less and less control over that. The Fed's get involved.
Corporations take over. With the planning board, associate member resignation?
Yes, the reporter, who was an associate member, Sue Harrow.
But she was also the secretary, right?
No, she was the reporter.
Recorder, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's different.
Oh.
She resigned?
So, the planning board has a reporter and everybody else has a secretary?
But, we had a member of the community email me expressing interest in, because it was on the agenda, she started running the agenda and she would like to be appointed to the position, Wanda Madsen.
This is Wanda?
Yep.
Yep. And to deliver to, already have our papers mailed, if you wanted to do it tonight.
I'll make a motion to report Wanda.
Except Wanda.
And then do we have to appoint, yeah, Jim Clark as Deputy Code Enforcement Officer because our code enforcement officers wait for four weeks?
We'll get a second to that one, though, Wanda.
Who would you do that? Who seconded?
I made a motion.
Oh, seconded. All in favor?
Who seconded? Yep.
And so, I'll make a motion that we appoint Jim Clark Deputy Code Enforcement Officer for the next, for at least for the next four weeks.
I have his term expiring on June 30th. So, that's when they all expire.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
That works. So, seconded Jim, Rick, all in favor? Take away the gavel on me tonight. Summer is finally come, huh? So pretty, huh?
It's very pretty and it smells lovely.
I just have a couple more things that came in today.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. Chicken's in the oven.
Well, is this in some announcements? We have the official letter from Rural, USDA, the Rural Development Grant that we applied for for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade stating that they have obligated for our project 1,610,000 and that we have to loan, borrow, two million from them. So, I just let you know that we did get the official word, that we've been approved and then the rest is gonna have to, we'll have to have some public hearings and then it'll have to go to town meeting for the, everything else.
And that two million, that was at a very low interest.
Yeah, 1.25%.
Was that, who was that from again?
USDA. Rural Development.
You can have a copy of this letter, you can have a copy of this letter if you want.
And the, right along that same line, I received the contract documents from the Imhoff tank upgrade that we're doing sooner than later. So, just letting you know that the project is out bid. Oliver's been handling all the advertising of that and the.
Once it bids too.
We, there's a. Seal bids will be until Feb, Friday, July 9th and then they'll be opened publicly at 2:00 here. And read aloud, July 9th. The bid opening shall be by Zoom.
But here.
Yep, and there's a, there's a, at 2:00, at 2:00. And there's a project meeting, I think this Friday down at wastewater plant. For anybody that has, the bidders that have questions, they can come down and see the plant this Friday. Although, just keeping you updated with some things going on.
And we have no other updates on the tax, re-tax assessment, reassessment.
There was a scheduled meeting. Nobody came, but a gentleman did call saying he was interested, but he was at another pre-bid meeting in another town.
And what's happened since then?
I have not heard anything.
Yes, we did, so down to bid again.
Well, it hasn't come out yet, the bidding, the opening.
Oh, oh, bid, when is it, when is it?
I think it's July 1st.
Oh, okay.
There'll be solar states either on the field or.
And when is that due? The bids for the solar project?
That is due, I believe, next meeting or the meeting after.
And that's the school one?
That is, no, that's the, so that's the deal, that we have control over.
We can't make a decision on the school one, the school property.
Here's something to contemplate. I was called by one of the, the projected bidders today and I was notified that there is some sort of legislation in the works that will change five-megawatt projects to two-megawatt, which would take us out of the running. If that, I mean, they're projecting that this is gonna pass even with a solar.
What's that mean?
Meaning, they're expecting the legislature to pass this five-megawatt project to limit it to two-megawatt.
I mean, any solar project?
Any big project, which would include what we're doing. I know, it didn't really mean either, but.
But why don't we wait till it gets passed?
But, here's the other thing, knowing that we were contemplating running solar panels helping the school and then helping us, they don't want it on the school roof because it's, the structure might not hold the weight or whatever.
Yeah, that's why I didn't think much.
But, it can be remote. So, if this other plan falls through, the 43 acres we have available could still have solar panels that will feed, feed the municipal needs and the school in help from the town garage lot.
We'll just have to see how it goes.
So, we have an in route.
There's another, it's a Plan B.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my conversation today. Anything else? No comment?
So, I talked to Renee Arrow today. I'm here on behalf of Lambs, on their board. So, as you know, we are running forward with our six concerts this summer, June 27th, July 25th. Friday, August 20th, we're doing a Bob Judge memorial, September 19th and October 3rd. So, when we, we decided, we're, we are looking to expand what we had last year and get more people there. So, we're gonna put in some vendors. We talked to the Luebec market folks, so we're gonna have like the bakery people have some food along with the music, a couple of vendors. But we got talking about the signage for Stockford Park in the town of Luebec. So, we went looking and there really isn't a whole bunch. There's one little white sign in blue letters with the K all faded on the sign that has the mileage markers to like Callis and stuff right before you go over the bridge. But you can't see it anymore because they put that big neon green pedestrian crossing sign right before.
Is it, or which road are we talking, 189?
189, there's no sign towards Stockford Park.
It used to be a sign for where the public restroom is or whatever.
Well, the only thing there is is the fish that Apple did that shows the bathroom. So, what Lambs would like to do is, we did notice further down 189, there's one of those poles with the Department of Transportation sign and the Cove Hill sign is almost made, you can't read it, but we're gonna reach out, see if we can get a Stockford Park sign on there. But, what we'd like to do is that Historic Luebec sign that sits on our front property, you know, you guys have on those two big poles, so the back side of that has nothing on it. So, we would, Lambs would make a plywood sign that would just mount on those poles, not on the painted on the back of your sign.
So, you'd only see it from Water Street?
Well, you'd only see, and then on the bottom of your sign, on the weekends that we're doing the music, we would put a banner, you know, underneath that sign that says Historic Luebec, on the bottom of that, we would have.
Now, sort this way.
That's right, so, so, all the time, you would see the sign that would just say, you know, Stockford Park, Main Sculpture Trail, the Yuki Santos Memorial Stadium.
On the other.
Right, and then on the other, and then underneath your sign, on the weekend of the event, we'd put up a banner.
Can you run those dates by you in the two seconds?
Sure, the dates are.
Could you get a poster of the dates?
Well, we do have a poster, it was posted and then you'll see it come around town, Kurt's doing that and then when we get back in a week, we're gonna be taking up the Eastport and some other places.
Sure.
And, and putting in Arts of Pelago. Hmm? Arts of Pelago at the Tide Institute. They have, they run it on the.
Yep, yeah, Kurt's on top of that stuff, but yeah. So, Sundays, July 27th, I'm sorry, June 27th, July 25th, and then Friday, August 20th. And then Sunday, September 19th, and Sunday, October 3rd. Music is scheduled to actually start at like 1:00. We're gonna open up vendors around 11:30, we're gonna let them in. So, it'll be a Sunday afternoon is really how we're doing it because.
Around the 3:00, the music?
Yeah, but there's always on, it usually runs a little longer than what's projected when you get to the Sunday afternoon. Right, a Sunday afternoon event.
Right.
And then the other thing, we just wanted to let you know, that weekend that we did the roof, Kenny opened up the men's room for everybody to use. So, there's a serious leak in the men's journal. And, and that, you know, we just kind of thought maybe we should give it all heads up, that you might wanna look at those public restrooms somewhere.
Kenny's doing that this week.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and that was our only, and.
I mean, wasn't it supposed to be, I didn't know.
Yeah, and then.
My first problem. Who, who won the race?
I don't know, but it.
I don't know who won the race.
What they noticed was that, you know, there was, when they used it, it was coming out onto the floor through a pipe.
So, I'm just going to volunteer that note.
And then our only other questions, well, we'll take care of it. We just wanted to confirm, is the same as last year, we bought in trash cans? Because that's not a park, you put a trash can in and then if we can put our garbage in the town dumpster at the end of the day would be your question, is that one?
We put a trash can in.
In Stockford Park?
Yeah.
Oh.
I know there was.
I didn't do it, the boss, the boss did it, she put it right by the stage.
Okay, well, all right, well, then, you know, but anyway.
Just if you get an overflow, just make sure it's bad, yeah.
Right, well, and last year, we put out an extra garbage can out in the back and then we have the food vendors this year. You know, we'll see how it goes. So, you guys are okay with us?
I'm not putting one in the back anymore.
I'm just confirming.
Yes.
You guys are okay with us putting up a permanent plywood sign on the back of your sign?
You'd really like to see what it looks like first.
Okay.
I mean, I think.
It's gonna be, you know, we were looking for nothing that says Lambs, really, just, you know, Stockford.
Well, even if it says Lambs, whatever.
Yes, okay.
But, just a little sketch of something, so maybe all of a sudden get surprised that.
And then we'll have a banner for just the weekends that we're doing it, they will come here.
I mean, when we were on the Economic Development Committee, we, the chamber at the time when I was on the chamber, that we donated the $1,000 for one of the signs and then the town donated 500 and then I think the other 500 came from donations you got, Dan? So, we got these two great signs. But I always, the twist was, why are you making the sign of that building? Is it not gonna, are we still gonna have that building? Is that the building that flooded away?
Well.
Now they can still see the building.
That's right.
Now they can. So, all right, we'll show you, we'll show you the sign and you're good with the banners and you know about the bathroom and the reason about the trash.
We didn't have water on it, bathroom, so I'm curious what was leaking. Because the water is.
No, when they used the urinal, it was coming out the pipe at the bottom of the urinal.
Well, that's a drain, probably.
So, well, you know what I mean, with that, we had gallons of water that they were using, you know, buckets for, because we didn't have water on that day and it said nothing to do with water, it just had to do with the structure of the urinal. Yeah. And, and would you object to if we were to update that little white sign that nobody can see, but you can't read it anyhow because the blue is all faded? You know?
Which way side?
Underneath that.
The one that you can't see.
The one that you can't see behind the pedestrian crossing sign. Looks like it's been there forever.
It's just Ock, Ock Park.
Right.
Oh, Ock Park.
It's Ock Park over there. So, we would just fix it.
You know, Marguerite Stockford is, lives in that. And she is very hot to clean up and tidy up.
She's got that part looking lovely.
She does.
Yes, she does.
She would like, and I may have to bring this up before she gets busy with us. She would like to repaint that bathroom with the mural.
Oh, yeah, she did, maybe.
She wants to paint it gray. Can we vote on that?
I don't know, it's like, you know.
Like we need anyone.
Guys? Marguerite Stockford would like to paint the bathroom gray, the outside where the mural is. But we need to vote on that because it was donated by the Class of 2000.
Oh, they wanna paint, she wants to paint over the mural?
Paint the whole thing gray.
I don't think they should paint over the mural, no.
Okay.
But it takes the rest of it gray.
Okay, but, where's the Class of 2000? Are they gonna come back and gussy it up?
Well, we have that, that in some ways we discussed, maybe.
I don't think there was a gussy in the Class of 2000.
Would like to fix, like to fix it up. I'm sure we can find somebody from the Class of 2000 and I think we can't just jump. First of all, they're doing an incredible job on private property, digging up like trenches of Japanese knotweed. I can't imagine what, you know, who would wanna do that and does, and not own the property, but I think that we should give the Class of 2000 an opportunity to fix their mural before you just go. That would be so bad if somebody just painted over that, especially.
Well, it would, or it might not, depending on the Class of 2000 or whatever.
No, I don't think we can speak for the Class of 2000.
By the way, I would go down to the school and seek them out. She was 2000, I was 98.
Okay, so, 2000, 2000.
What was that, 21 years ago?
2000 plus 18.
Those people are in their 30s.
No, everybody, everybody 39.
Oh, Sarah.[1791.88]
The yearbooks are in the library. You can figure out exactly where they are.
Okay, good. They're in the library. I'm going to go down and see who the Class of 2000 is.
Penny will know.
Is Penny in the Class of 2000?
No, she's in my class. I'm doing class 90.
But she'll know.
She'll know.
Okay.
So, committee updates?
None.
Thank you for the public comment. Anything else?
Yes, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Renee here is.
Thanks.
I'm getting Dan.
Uh, no.
I'm going to ask him.
Get them all, get them all. I'm looking for the one you're doing. I like the poster down in Marina.
Thank you.